Mr. Hadid, would you be kind enough to say the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as one.
Joanne, may I have the roll call, please?
He'll have to turn the mics on.
Oh, thank you.
You just hit the mute button until it turns green.
Debbie Speedy?
Here.
Kathy Buckley?
Here.
Jeremy Connors? Michael Hygdon?
Here.
Holden Lehman?
Here.
Ed Maron?
See.
Mark San?
Here.
Pauline Stone? Karen Pucher?
Present.
Oh, we got you, Pauline.
See the palm trees behind me out the window?
She's just bruising, eh?
She is.
I'll be there tomorrow.
It's resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
A motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I totally skeptically questions or discussions. Does anyone have any questions? We're all set? Okay. Noes, abstains, resolution passes. I just want to give a reminder to make sure we speak into our microphones. It helps us all with recordings and clarity, and I think it helps the people in our audience. Just put down your mute button until it turns green. All right. We've set aside 10 minutes for public comment. If anyone would like to make a comment at this time, I'd ask that they please approach the Board, but before we start that, we're going to have Mr. Maron summarize our public comment board policy.
All right. So, the intent is to always encourage people to give us some public comment, public feedback. It's just essentially a reminder that this is a meeting of the Board, for the Board, and it happens to be an open session in public. So, there's not supposed to be a discussion between the Board and the public. It's we're here to listen to questions and concerns. Otherwise, anything that requires some feedback, then should go through the Board Clerk and we'd be happy to respond in any way, fashion possible. We ask that we behave in a civil manner, no obscene language, of course. In particular, we can't really talk about people specifically. Do not, by policy, allow anyone to be named out in person. That's just protection for everyone, good or bad. You can't even say something nice out there either. And I think that pretty much covers the decorum associated with public comment.
Is there anyone that would like to approach the Board at this time? Seeing that there is no one, our next will be our presentation, and our presenter this evening will be on School Resource Officer, and it is Sheriff David Fabro.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come and address everybody. I think rather than give a presentation, as I was cited, I would like to first start with a thank you for being a good partner. I know Mr. Mannix and I have spent an awful lot of time over the last several years, and he has pretty much led the way for the county with all of the schools getting on board with school safety and School Resource Officer programs. Anytime he's had an issue, we've had problems, we've had really good communications back and forth. We most recently met last week, week and a half ago, to discuss opportunities, to talk more with faculty, more with people in the building, so that we can continue that line of communications and improve the line of communications. I think what I really want everybody to realize, though, and some of the misconceptions that I've heard with School Resource Officers, not just in our area, but everywhere, and as a country as a whole, it's tragic, needless to say, that we even have to have these discussions about providing such an opportunity and such a program for our schools. It shouldn't have to be like that. Nonetheless, we need to realize that a School Resource Officer, the last thing that they are is an armed security person in your schools. That is the bottom of the priority list of what they do. And I've heard so many people say, "It's nice that you have an armed officer in the school." We really don't. That's a benefit, if you will, but it's at the bottom of our priority list. The top of our priority list is to have somebody who has been exposed to crimes, to criminality, to society, to understand what's going on in the community, and be able to co-mingle with not just students, but with faculty, with staff, with parents, all of those components. I go back to my earlier years at the Plasberg Police Department, head of the Juvenile Division, and I started the DARE program in 1992. And the training that I received back in 1992 actually came out of Los Angeles, California, and they showed a triangle. And that triangle was the school, police, and parents. And the students were trapped inside that triangle. And between the three components, we comprise all of a student's life. So, we can actually surround and help shape and help guide the well-being of our students. It's important that we do that. Having that School Resource Officer there in school allows that officer the opportunity to get to know the students, get to understand their family dynamics, get to understand a little bit more about the social groups that they're with, a little bit more about what classes they like, special interests they have, and most importantly, build the trust and a relationship with students, so that if they do have an issue, they can come forward to that School Resource Officer and say, "I have a problem," or "I heard something today that's bothering me," or "I heard something that you might want to know." That is the true success of a School Resource Program. We have seen those successes a couple times here at Beakman Town School, a couple times at other area schools that have been very, very beneficial for us to have. I've been told twice already this school year, and I won't mention names because we're not supposed to do that, so you gotta pay attention. But I had heard twice already this year that this program was well worth its weight in gold already this year, because we circumvent some major, major problems. It's good to hear that. On the same note, it's sad also that we even have to think about that. Nothing disturbs me more than having to sit down at budget year and try and figure out how are we going to pay for programs like this. If I had my vote and I had my say in it, I would like to say, "Look, let's keep the money in and put it with the educators, put it with the people that really can help the growth and shape these young people into productive members of our society." But then, on the other hand, I'm thinking, "Well, that's part in what our School Resource Officer is supposed to be doing." So, there's a little bit of a role there, but still, I don't like the fact. We constantly research for grant opportunities, for ways to be able to offset the costs. Anything that we can do to reduce the burden on behalf of the school district, we certainly want to do. But most importantly, number one, we want to keep the communications open, and we want to keep the program strong, and we want to keep the presence in the schools, so that the last thing students do is say, "Wow, hey, there's a police officer here, I wonder what's going on." That's not necessarily a good environment either. This way, that barrier is broken down, they have a rapport with the officer that's here, and things work out very well. I don't want to go on too, too much. I think everybody has a little bit of a grasp of what it's about, but if anybody has any particular questions or concerns or issues, I certainly would be willing to take a couple moments and address that.
Can I bring up one? So, every now and then, people hear about funding of School Resource Officers, and it seems like every law enforcement entity has a way, maybe, to have a, potentially to have a School Resource Officer, but they mechanically, they guess they go about it different ways. So, I think of the city of Plasberg and the City Police Department, they have their way of having School Resource Officers in the city school. Malone, I remember how Malone achieved their School Resource Officer, and I think they went through the DA's office. Back in the day, the state police had School Resource Officers. And then, of course, when you have opponents and you're running for political office, they have creative ways that they think might work, right? They might be able to save a dollar or two. So, can you just kind of go through mechanically how we have engaged, and we've approved that contract here at the Board for a School Resource Officer? And you did talk about the grant funds, and we've, maybe, how many times we sit down and we kind of try to work out a cost-effective way to keep a School Resource Officer manageable within our budget?
Excellent. I think most importantly, we need to realize in a school system, it's critical for consistency, and it's critical for commitment. I was really irritated, I guess I'll say, when New York State came out with COPS money, that's what they refer to as these grant programs for School Resource Officers. And they put millions of dollars into the New York State Police to provide that program. Three years later, when the grant money went away, so did the officers. That was a couple years after I was in office as sheriff, and a lot of the schools started calling me saying, "What are you going to do?" I didn't leave, I wasn't there in the first place, but we've got to fix the problem, because school safety is paramount, it's critical. So, we had to come up with a way to be able to do it. It's a commitment. It is a full-time body that is committed to each school district that we sign an agreement with, realizing that in this school, if Bob Anis, who is a retired officer with 30 years experience, who has done this for a long time, cares about the kids, cares about the community, and really understands the issues, he understands a little bit about school law, a lot about what's going on in his community, so you get the value of a good seasoned officer. But most importantly, you have the value of a commitment to a full-time officer here. Heaven forbid if Bob breaks a leg tomorrow and he's out of school for four months, six months, whatever the case may be, we have to backfill it with somebody off the road. I can't turn around and say, "Well, sorry, he's hurt, you're not getting anybody." So, we have to be prepared to make that commitment. Now, if you take the county as a whole and globally take a look at all the school districts that we have throughout the county, and I make that commitment to all of those schools, I have to be able to back that commitment up. And I'm willing to do that. And there are days where even myself, I've had to go in and say, "I'm going to be your SRO for today, because this is what we have to do to get things done." It's very difficult to keep the positions there. In addition to that, another complexity is we're dealing with unions, just as you folks deal with here. Nor would a teacher want to say, "Well, let's get all part-time teachers to come in, and we don't need to pay benefits and retirements." Well, that's ridiculous idea. Just like it is with law enforcement, we don't have the ability to just do that. We did come up with a cooperative agreement with our patrol division, uniformed division, and say, "Look, we want to be able to bring in some retired police officers that we're going to train specifically for School Resource Officers. Your jobs are not in jeopardy, but there were not enough full-time police officers that wanted to step up and say, 'Yes, I want to work with kids, I want to work in a school district.'" The last thing we want to do is send a deputy up here to a school and have him say, "I don't want to be up there, I don't want to do that, I want to be on the streets doing stuff, I want to be doing something else, I don't want to be working in school." Because they're not going to give you the product that you deserve or that you want, and it's not going to have a positive reflection on our agency as well. So, we want people that want to be in schools to work there. It's a difficult commodity to find, it's not as popular as one may think that it is. So, that's a third challenge that we actually face. A lot of departments can do a lot of things, and I'll, since you brought it up, Mr. Mannix, the city of Plasberg specifically, they have the one school district, Plasberg City School District, so they're talking middle school, the high school. I understand that occasionally, they pop into the elementary schools. The program that they are doing is nothing, and it's not the same as our program that we're doing. We have a full-time, uniformed, armed, equipped officer in the school for a variety of reasons, as I said earlier, the least of which is for the purpose of having an armed officer in the school. But the benefit is that you have an officer there that can work with kids, that can talk with kids, that can be a guest speaker, that's functional in your school community, available for parents, students, faculty, staff, everybody, on a full-time basis, not jumping from school to school, not if they're not there today, "Well, he's off today, he'll be back tomorrow," or just a couple days a week. When you start factoring in the training, you start factoring in the equipment, it's about $15,000 for an officer to be able to get them equipped with a vest, with the lights, with the radios, all of the gear that they actually have, and with the training. That is our in-kind contribution, if you will, back to the district. I would love to get the county legislature to just say, "Look, this is our commitment for public safety, we're going to do it for all schools." I would be the first one to be in line with that charge, but we're not seeing it. So, what we did is we had to take the cost of a full-time, brand-new deputy, as if we were to hire one off the street tomorrow, base pay, and that's what we went to the school districts with and said, "This is the level that it's going to cost us, because we have to have somebody available full-time." Serenac, Alsable, Peru, CV Tech?
Does NAC have a part-timer?
NAC has a part-timer, and we're talking with NCCS right now, they're not sure if they're going to go full-time or share a part-time to combine. But they have full-time, and we were able to get a deputy sheriff that said, "Yeah, I want to work in the schools, that's what I want to do." So, it's difficult, again, I'm adding on to the complexities. Another complexity with the problem that we had is how can I say, "Well, Beakman Town is going to pay just what the salary is for a 209V," but Peru and Alsable say, "Well, you're going to have to pay the cost of a new guy coming in." Then the union chimed in and said, "Well, wait a second, you know, we don't want to be cherry-picked apart one at a time by saying, 'Well, we're going to put a part-timer, we're not going to put a full-timer.'" So, we, by contract, have to provide the opportunity first to a deputy sheriff. If we had one that came into work tomorrow and said, "I want to bid that job at the start of the next school year at Beakman Town, and I'd like to be able to go out there," we would have to provide them that opportunity first. But likewise, it's a commitment on their part. They can't do it for a couple months and say, "I don't like this, I want to go back on the road." No, doesn't happen. I understand the value in schools of consistency. We have to have the consistency, and we've tried really hard to maintain that, and there were a couple times when the deputy assigned out here at Beakman Town had a couple issues and was out for a few weeks, and we sent up a consistent partner who knew the district, who knew the players, who could be able to fiddle in without missing a beat, and things worked out very well. That, again, is the commitment on our side. That's important, and I think to be able to give that level of commitment is something that's a challenge, and it's been a task that Mr. Mannix and I have had to kind of deal with back and forth. And again, going back to election time, that came out being people who didn't fully understand what we're up against and what we had to deal with that was out there making comments, not being fully educated on it. I don't think it's fair even to compare one program to another. If you want to compare apples to apples, then compare what Beakman Town is getting to what Alsable is getting, and to what Peru is getting, to what CV Tech is getting, so that we know the full-time law enforcement commitment, fully-equipped vehicles with backup reinforcements. Now, behind the scenes quickly, if I may, before we get into something different, I think you need to also understand the dynamics of what happens outside of school. Now, the officer, we'll use this district, the officer here shows up for a briefing at my department in the morning and sits down with eight or 10 other officers, and they're talking about things that are going on, cars that have been stolen, warrants that are out there, you know, wanted people in the area. And then they go school to school and say, "Okay, Serenac, what's going on? What are you seeing in Serenac? In Beakman Town, what are you seeing in Beakman Town?" So, there's communications that go on on a daily basis. So, if that officer happens to mention, "You know, I don't understand, but this kid mentioned this phrase," or talked about a gang, "I think he's kind of crazy, I don't think there's a gang," and they're, "Whoa, whoa, wait a minute. You know what, out of Peru, we're hearing that, too." "Yeah, we're going to get in Alsable, too." We can really put the pieces together faster. So, if there is a community problem, if there's an issue out there, the networking that happens on a daily basis, hopefully, is going to intervene early enough so that we can get the information and knowledge and circumvent a critical situation from occurring in any school district. I think personally, 37 years of experience in this business, I think that's one of the most beneficial pieces to this and one of the most exciting pieces to this, because I witnessed firsthand, sitting in on those briefings, the communication that goes on, and I like it. I like to see that, because that is exactly how we, as a community, are going to be able to combat some of these issues, and how we're going to be able to deal with it before it becomes a crisis in any one of our schools. Those are the issues that we may not see, and that people who bring up, you know, great ideas and say, "I can save you $30,000 and give you this program," you know, we're not sending somebody up in a polo shirt with a hideaway gun. We're sending you up a police officer that is telling the students and the faculty, "I'm a police officer. I'm not here to be your security guard. I am here to be an associate, I am here to be a colleague, I am here to be a friend, I am here to be somebody who you can trust and you can communicate with and be able to share problems and concerns in your community, particularly with the school community." Anybody have any other questions? I tend to get a little bit too passionate with this, and I could carry on for a couple hours, so I promise not to do that. Anyone else?
Well, I would like to thank you for your presentation, but I would also like to thank Officer Bob. He's been really dedicated to our district, and we really, truly appreciate his support and his consistent approach to our district, so we're really grateful he's here.
He enjoys it, and he's got a learning curve. You get new administrations, you get new faculty, you get new people, and you have to communicate with them and talk about different ways of doing business, but he enjoys the challenge. He's very knowledgeable, sometimes he likes to hide that, and that's part of his style, but he's very knowledgeable about what's going on, and most importantly, he's very passionate towards the school community environment, and I believe, and I certainly hope, very respectful for that environment. And I think that's an important piece that comes with it, you're getting a seasoned individual as opposed to getting that brand-new person at the bottom of the totem pole.
Can I also thank Sheriff Fabro for the DARE program that you provide for both our elementary schools, and our kids really enjoy that, and they get a lot out of that. And also, the other, not too long ago, a couple weeks ago, we had a pretty serious issue, we were messaging out to our school community, and late at night, I called one of your deputies who was manning the phone and asked for reinforcements in the morning just to ease parents' concerns, and we had a number of deputies just here walking around, it was very helpful, so thank you for that, too.
And again, all those are benefits of the program, because that communication is critical. If we look at any major crisis that we have, any school violent issue, any governmental violent issue, it's because of a breakdown of communications. So, we need to keep that line open, we always need to be in contact with people, always let us make the determination of, "Well, I don't want to bother you, I don't think it's a big issue." We would rather respond 100 times to nothing than respond once to a critical incident and say, "Well, I didn't want to bother you." It is not a bother, that's what we are here for. We are here to serve the community and to make this place a better community, and we certainly can do that with good partnerships like this. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, next we have reports. Superintendent of Schools Daniel Mannix will do our next report.
Sheriff, I'm going to have Ben Brown, our school business manager, help me, back to our tradition here of going through a couple different budget items. So, about maybe four or five years ago, the Board asked us to develop a multi-year plan, kind of look at where we were and where we're going with our budgets, and we've done that again this year. And you see that on the screen, and I have some, I think, actually, President Spock is passing those around. So, you'll have some sheets, the writing is small, because there's a lot of good information there. But so, some of the numbers are really starting to shake off, we're starting to have solid numbers to work from. Some of the numbers will change, and we are waiting for those changes, and we're always tracking the information that comes across our different information sources. So, as you see in the first line across the board, and we're really talking about the middle line, the forecast for 1920, and then we have what might happen in subsequent years, we certainly know what happened in previous years. Well, and we're closing out the books in 1819, so those numbers are pretty solid, but they'll shape up a little bit differently as we close things out. But as you see, shared services and other, we have a pretty significant increase in revenue source, and that is mainly due to the waiver that we wrote and were awarded, started implementing essentially last school year. Is that correct, Assistant Superintendent? Yeah, last year's school year, which is bringing in a nice revenue source. So, is it, we have declines in other revenue sources like Medicaid and others? This is, we're very innovative, and we applied to the Commissioner of Education for a waiver, we granted that waiver, and it is bringing in additional revenues, certainly at a much needed time, because we're going to get to some other serious numbers. Another number which we've been pretty aggressive with here at Beakman Town, and advocating for our taxpayers, are the payment in lieu of taxes, that number. As everybody knows here, who's been listening over the years, we know that when a big business, and they are basically given to the big businesses, receives a payment in lieu of taxes, they're receiving a tax break. They're receiving usually a significant tax break. And the only thing that means to us is, is number one, it hurts us on our tax cap calculation, but number two, the pilot tells me that every other taxpayer is going to have to pick up the burden. So, for every pilot agreement that's made with a big business, the mom and dad, homeowner of the mom and pop stores, the small businesses, they pay more. They pay more because the big business is paying less, because our budget is going to stay the same. Our budget doesn't go up or down based on a pilot. Our budget is the budget, and the taxpayers, state aid pays for about half of it, and our taxpayers pay for the other half. And if somebody's getting a break from not paying that half, that means everybody else is putting in more money. So, we're really concerned about our pilots. Luckily, they've been relatively stable over the last couple of years, and we have been working very hard with the town and the county to make sure that those pilots do not hurt our taxpayers of our school district.
And the next number we're going to talk about is our state aid number, and as you can see, it's about $21.8 million, and that is coming from the governor's run. So, that's the only number available right now. We're hoping that that is the worst-case scenario, we're hoping the Assembly of Legislature will get some more money, but there's no guarantee there. So, we're starting out with the governor's proposal, and as you can see, the, it is about 50% of what we collect. So, as Mr. Mannix will say.
So, yeah, then you have the tax levy minus the star, I'm going to call it the reimbursement, and you see the number right below it, 21, you know, hovering around 21 million, so that's the 50-50 split at Beakman Town. Every school district's different, it doesn't work that way in other districts, but at Beakman Town, it is about 50-50 split. Totalling total revenues this year, we're anticipating around 44 million. So, then the trick is, how do you have all your revenues, and then you have all these expensive items? Number one is our human resources, so we're going to go through a couple, well, we're going to talk about how we appropriate our reserves, and then we'll go through our expenditures. So, every year, we have retirements, and we have reserves that we need to appropriate. Sometimes it's unemployment reserve, sometimes it's insurance reserve, and again, sometimes it's retirement, and there's a retirement payout when people do retire. And we use, before, I think, four or five years ago, we were just hoping that we had the money in a reserve or left over in the budget, but we started dedicating $150,000 for that reserve. And sometimes if we have a number of like nine retirements, we'll pay out more than $150,000 to all those people who have retired and all the different things that happen where we had to take money out of reserves. But we know over time, that will level out with 150. So, we have a very, a smoothing effect for our reserves by replenishing $150,000 into those reserves. And then our fund balance appropriation, which we need the Board to really accept and understand, and it's something that we've been very smooth with, again, over the years, is we've been appropriating $1.2 million of fund balance to our reserves, working hard to make sure that we are conservative with our budgets and conservative with our spending. This year, really because of the massive health insurance increase over the last two years, about 40% increase, we've increased that by just $100,000, so it's $1.3 million this year for our appropriated fund balance. So, for our total revenues, I'm sorry, I think I said before, our total revenues were 44 million, but our available revenues would be 45,71,147. And the only reason I think that might change is I guess something could happen with revenues that's unanticipated, and the only other thing that could change would be the state aid. And we do anticipate that the state will, the legislature and the Senate and the Assembly will give us more money than what the governor does. They always do give us a little bit more money.
So, now we'll move to the expenditures. We did a, the rollover budget would be the $42.5 million, so that's what we put into our budget for this current year, for the 1819 school year. So, a rollover budget would be that dollar figure, and then the numbers- And then the numbers following that are all the increases or decreases, the big values. First is the salary and retirement mandates. As you can see, it's about $510,000. That is a little bit lower than usual because TRS and ERS both went down substantially, which was a huge benefit for us because it decreases the overall cost. So, it was a nice perk to have with health insurance going down by so much.
For those who knew, the TRS is the teachers' retirement system. It's guaranteed by the Constitution of New York State and as is the ERS, the employee retirement system. They really are the same retire, they're the same benefits, but they're two different retirement systems. And they have two different rates. The rates are different, but the benefits are essentially the same. So, yet Jennifer's right, that really has been a big help this year, having those go down where some other costs were up dramatically. Programming this year, we do have an anticipated $82,000. That's not for any one thing in particular. It's really a rollover budget. But, there are things that we need to balance out and different items in each individual area of our school district that just need $82,000 worth of allocation to balance out. But, it's not like part of a new program or science or anything in particular, or School Resource Officer in particular.
And as you can see, the next very large increase is our health insurance. So, that is $1.52 million with the increase for this year. And the average was about 13%. This is the first year since I've been doing this that there were different increases for different plans and different levels. So, I just put in there an average of the, there was four, actually, four different rates of about 13%, which is another very, very large increase for us to sustain. BOSI's admin increase, that comes from BOSI's administration. There, all of their retirements and benefits and people's all go into that also. So, that increased by $80,432. PTEC and CBS.
Can we just scroll down a little bit?
PTEC and CBS increases.
Thank you.
About $20,000. And that is due to the stabilization of the CBS rate, which ours went up about 20,000 this year. But, that's actually, overall, gonna be a very good thing. We're not gonna have to guess anymore about how many students are gonna be going to CBTech and estimate, it either be over or under budgeted. They're actually averaging out the rate now. So, we're gonna know exactly what we need to budget for every year. So, this year, it's a little more expensive than normal, but overall, this is going to be very beneficial to us in budgeting. So, and they do it over a three-year average. It's actually gonna be a very, very good thing for schools. And then, ban in principal and debt service, they're all kind of related. The bans are what we consider short-term borrowings. So, our ban is actually turning into a bond. So, that's why the bans are going down and the bonds are going up. We are beginning our, another big part of our project, so that ban's gonna go away. We're gonna turn it into a bond for long-term debt. So, that's where you see the big change right there, going from bans to bonds.
And then we have our total expenditures of 46 million, just basically 46 million. And so, we're right now, in the red, $200,000, 2.250,000, which is less than a half a percent. So, when you think about the, our entity and the 2,000 students we have and the 350 employees, and we're looking right now for a budget that starts in July, July 1. And we're right now feeling that we're confident enough to be within a half a percent of that. If you try to do that in your own home with your three kids and your dog and all that in your car, I think it'd be quite challenging. But, you know, we do, we do keep a close eye on everything. So, we also are anticipating to receive more money from the state government and we'll see where that lays out. Another really important component that we will talk about is this middle one. Right now is the cap outlay project. Before I talk about the cap outlay, I want to show you, these blanks right here really just indicate to you that this is a rollover budget. This isn't anything where we're being super creative. There's not a lot to discuss. We don't get to talk about different programs that have more value than others. We've been in that situation before, which has been great. Should we bring in a School Resource Officer? Should we start Project Lead the Way? All these items that we've been able to bring to Beaton Town. Not necessarily this year. So, and you will also see that up in the programming number two. Like, I think back a couple of years ago, the increase of 260. But, the cap outlay, every year, we do need to discuss the cap outlay. This particular year, we're just finishing up the start. Actually, we're finishing up all the administration components so we can start the cap outlay, which is putting new doors in at the Cumberland Head School. And they are very unique doors and they lock, they can lock automatically with a touch of a button. So, that if there ever was a disaster, you don't have to worry about the teacher locking it. It could be just one-touch button and it all would lock. We're gonna do the same thing at Beaton Town Elementary School. So, next year's, in this year's budget is the cap outlay. It's $100,000. We received $80,000 of that dollars, $80,000 of those dollars back in revenue. So, for $20,000, we have new doors that are of a higher standard, up to code, up to a higher level of code, but certainly up to a greater extent of, they provide a greater security to our teachers and most importantly, our students. So, those, that is our cap outlay project. We've talked about that a few times, but it's important for our taxpayers to know that that is in the budget as well this year. So, that's really our, that's, you're not gonna see a lot, a lot of other changes as we discuss our budget with the public and as we bring other items to you. The health insurance is set. The BOSI's admin is mandated. We don't have a say in that. That is set. The PTEC is almost set. The CBS rate increase is now that's set. We already know year-to-year, so it's not gonna be a guessing game. To guess is a good thing. The ban, the bonds, those are all set. Our tax cap is set and we're gonna talk about that in just a second as well. So, with that said, that's the Board of Education. Do you have any questions about our multi-year plan?
The capital bus purchases. I know we do that over and over again, but it's a, there's nothing showing.
Yeah, so there's nothing showing because there's no increase or decrease. So, the buses are gonna be about the same price as last year. A few years ago, when, five years ago, we completed a transportation study. And the transportation study said, because of your enrollment, because of the number of buses you had in your programming, you needed to buy four buses one year and three buses the next and go four, three, four, three. And we found that to be pretty good. It worked well for a couple of years. But, then ELT came along and we were able to send our kids on far more, far more field trips. And also, we were able to add other sports teams like our Modified B team, our Unified Teams, our Unified Teams. So, and then our indoor track teams. So, we have more, more kids going to more places. We have a robotics squad. Maybe you saw the emails I was putting out. We sent a group to Clarkson University. So, our buses are on the road more and our population has picked up. So, we have more kids as well. So, now, we're comfortable, we have four buses in the budget and we'll pay for four buses. So, there's no increase or decrease on the buses. Any other questions? Okay, next, I guess we'll just talk about the tax cap and I'll hand that over to you, Jen.
Sure. I did hand you guys out a sheet, tax cap. I know that's a really long calculation for you all to look at. I apologize. But, it is what the state requires. So, as you can see, we're at a 2.59% increase. Or two, yes, 2.59, or 2.56, I'm sorry. And that is actually a good place to be. So, what that means for us, I mean, I can go through the, you know, equation. We start out with last year, this year, this 1819 levy. And then we multiply it by our tax-based growth factor, which is given to us by New York State. So, and actually, I think we were one of the highest in Clint County, which is a very good thing. Then we have our pilots in there and our capital exclusions, our growth factor, which is the CPI. And then we have pilots for this current year. And in the end, we come up with our tax levy limit before exclusions and after exclusions. So, that tax levy limit with exclusion, the $21,275,400, is what we have, we're able to go out to the public with without going to the 60% super majority. So, we can go up to that dollar figure and only have a 50%. So, and that, what that means as far as dollars and cents goes, we can increase the budget by $530,162.
And you'll see in other presentations how previously at Beaton Town, we'd sometimes be at a negative or a zero and then actually the next year be asking the taxpayers for a 12% increase. And we really thought that was really frustrating to our taxpayers. So, what we've been trying to do again over the last five or six years is just have that smoothing effect for our taxes. Two, three percent is something that we feel, it's something our taxpayers have said, they support it. But, they do become pretty frustrated when you have these high fluctuations.
And unfortunately, sometimes we don't have control over some of these numbers, like the pilots. If something were to happen with a large pilot, it can really hurt the tax levy limit, which sometimes we don't have a lot of control. But, yeah, if we can continue on keeping, trying to keep everything level like this, we'll stay around the same figure. Keep our capital projects consistent, we're in very good shape.
Excellent. Does anyone have any additional questions?
Okay, I have a couple of other items to discuss here. We, I just wanted to point out again that the fund balance allocation this year is 1.3 million. Our enrollment projections are the only thing that's a, pretty much, there's two items that are variables right now. Kindergarten registration isn't in yet. We've been generally seeing somewhere between 65 students to 85 students in each one of our two schools. But, other than that, everybody else kind of rolls in except for a, we usually see a bump in sixth grade and an increase in ninth grade with students coming to our district from Catholic schools. But, our enrollment is pretty solid. It's really hovering right at 2,000 students, which is a nice number to be. And we did talk about the governor's runs. Couple of other items in my presentation here. On the docket today is a discussion on the Dodge Library. We had talked about that before. I think we got sidetracked with some other conversations over the, over the last few months. We're back on talking of the Dodge Library. The Dodge Library was given to the school district and it was given to the school district to be used as a library. We are having a hard time maintaining the Dodge Library. And there's an association that actually has maintained the library for a number of years. And they have sought over maybe the last 15 or 20 years to have the district give them the library. And we actually have our legal counsel looking at how do we go about doing that. Doesn't need to be put to vote. But, I know that there was, we'll have another discussion later on. I know there was a committee meeting on that. Couple of other items? Sure. Question?
Yeah, I had a question.
Sure.
So, can we go over real quick? Nice, reds there for those three years on the deficit section.
Sure, so, but we're back on the multi-year budget. So, the, I talked about the, right now, we're in the red for this school year for about $250,000, which is about 0.5%. Where we generally know that over the last few years, the legislature, and I say that the Senate and the Assembly increase with the governor's runs are somewhere around $300,000, $400,000. So, we're anticipating to see an increase again and that should really smooth out those numbers. If we don't, we'll go, we'll go into other lines and really, really try to get a little tighter. I mean, that's what we're gonna do.
So, we figured that most likely based on history, that next year one's been end up being a net.
The next year, the 342 or the 242?
242.
A net zero?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right? So, why do we think that the other two, especially the third one, is so more, much more aggressive?
Well, so, it's a compounding effect. So, if you, if you increase state aid a X amount, it's amazing what that does to those, to those other numbers. And if you modify one or, if you modify a couple of numbers, it really has, it's more than a dollar-for-dollar decrease. So, you'll probably see over the, over the next couple, over the next month and month and a half, you'll see those numbers smooth out. That's what we're anticipating. So, I'll give you another example. So, that's a half a percent. So, we have said to the, our admin team before, I know Gary will remember this, maybe Sarah will remember this. Everybody needs to, you spend your budget, but leave 2%. If we leave 2% left in our admin budget, 2% left in our supplies budget, 2% across everywhere and squeeze our heating on 2%, then that equals, that's gonna equal about a half a percent. So, sometimes we have a retirement, we could fill it with a sub. You know, you go from a high, high-cost employee to a low. There's different ways to make sure that you stay within your budget, but we will stay within our budget. And you'll see in those other years will become dramatically lower. Because we do get, I do, we always do have a little bit of a heart attack when we see, you know, about a million dollars over there. But, and you'll remember that when we first started this, all those numbers were in the red, in the millions, right?
I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah.
Everybody understands that that picture is not just a red because it's gonna be in that way, then there's a process coming.
Yes, thank you, 100% right. ELT, just so you know, there's a board policy that says I approve any field trip that's in state where students need to spend the night. And we do have, I think, two field trips going out to New York City. I'll be putting this in the portal. It's ELT grant-funded and a nice article on why our students, why students today should have these type of cultural experiences. I think you'll find a quick read, it's a really good read. I had a really good conversation with Principal Nelson and one of her PBL teams. And they looked to be doing a fundraiser for the Honor Flight. And I know the Honor Flight's so close to a lot of our hearts. So, look for, look for more information on that, but that's a really interesting project. And it's also just kind of increasing the relationship with the Honor Flight that we already have at Beaton Town, but that those students have already made with the Honor Flight and all the good work that they're doing. So, it was, it's a great project. There has been discussion on water, the need for water for about eight to 10, I guess it's now 10 residential homes in the Beaton Town Central School District just down the road. The issue, it sounds easy, right? It sounds like we have water and we can share our water. Unfortunately, it's not as easy as the board saying, let's share our water. Because our system is really funded by taxpayers and State Education Department. So, just like if we wanted to put up a wall right here in the library and make a different room over there, which we actually wanted to do, but we can't, we need state ad approval. So, if we wanted to tap in to change our water system, it looks like we're gonna need state approval. It makes sense, right? Because right now, we know it's in our water system and we know it's, you know, might get contaminated by maybe our science classroom or something, but we kind of know what our environment is. But, the second we loop in these homes, we lose control of that. So, and really, it's not that I want control of that, but the state, you know, says, well, first things first, it's the, it's the school first. So, that's a, that's a big hurdle to get across. But, we are looking at it. We're not, it doesn't, we haven't shut the door on it yet. But, I just wanted you to know that even if we all wanted to, which I think, you know, who doesn't wanna, if we can, if the well can provide the water, we would wanna do that, but it may not be just our decision. Okay? And lastly, one thing that may be coming our way soon, and we're beginning to see more and more of this at the collegiate level, believe it or not, Division One, Division Three, and now at the high school level, is you're seeing esports teams, right? It's an esport team. An esport team is a group of kids that are into gaming. Mr. Kuchar, do you know any students that are into gaming at all?
Not too much.
No, you don't? So, anyways, there's a, some districts are now starting esports teams and they're competing. And actually, like I said, you're gonna see national championships in esports and at the collegiate level. So, that's something that we're gonna look at and see if it's something that we can provide for our students. Because when you think about it, well, you know, sure, our kids will be playing video games. That's really not our decision. kids be playing video games, that's really not our decision, they're playing those video games. But if they're playing those video games and they're playing them together, and they're communicating and, and competing against other schools and getting on college campuses, that's probably better than going home and sitting on their couch and playing those games. So, it is an interesting way. If we, something kids are doing anyways, why not see if we can make it into a learning activity? So, we may be creative and be the first local district to have an esports team. Who knows? We'll see. Okay? Any questions on my presentation? All right.
I will say that two students came to the engineering open house that they had there, and when we got there, we got there early, and I kind of lost them for a little bit because I was talking to an instructor. The reason I lost them is because right next door was an EA Sports Arena, they call it. They had twenty-six high-end computers, and the college has a four-tier competitive esports division. And actually, the original started because kids wanted it, and also because it, it happened to increase the enrollment activity at the SUNY Camden Facility. But what I found interesting initially, I thought, kids are just playing on the computers, but no, they're not. So, so what was interesting is the students not only are, is in a competitive environment, right, esports, but many of the students participate in the design, coding, graphic arts, and so all the other components associated with, with that industry.
Sure. And you can't, those are, if you, if you have those skills, you're gonna find a job.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right. Next, our next report is ex-officio student board member Cameron Kuchar.
Hello. At Cumberland Head, we have students in the second grade, they went to Titus Mountain for tubing, thanks to the ELT funding. They had a great time. Third-grade students were able to have karate lessons from Master Bo C during, was it Bo C?
Boys.
Boys. During ELT, they learned life skills as well as physical fitness. Shannon Fisher Bouye continues to offer yoga and mindfulness to students. Many of the students are volunteering their recess time for yoga. Fifth grader was even noted saying, this calms me down. So the idea is for students to increase self-regulation skills, then that appears to be working for many of the students. The New York State computer-based testing simulation, they went really well at Cumberland Head. There were a few small issues, but overall, the feedback was great from the teachers, the inference, the infrastructure. And teaching readiness is up to par, thanks to the Twenty-First Century Learning Department. They were very thankful for the tech support. Students took, took it in all, took it all in stride. We are looking forward to spring and more outside recess time. At the Beadman Town Elementary, students raised over two thousand dollars for the Vermont Children's Hospital and WOKO, earning all four incentives. That was the coin drive that they started last month, I believe. And students participated each Monday in February Fitness Challenge. The New York State CBT simulation went off well, without a hitch there too, and they are ready for ELA and Math CBT next month. In the middle school, the Beadman Town Middle School Robotics Team competed at the first Lego League Robots Competition at Clarkson University on the ninth. The Space Eagles Team won the Innovator Award. Sean Lucas from Casella Way spoke to the eighth graders about, spoke to the eighth grader on the issues of ways in Clinton County. The regional spelling bee also took place at Osable Valley High School, and they have three students participating in that spelling bee. Over in the high school, last week, the high school started the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-year course selection process throughout their Course Awareness Fair Week. The counseling department is pushing into classrooms to start the course selection process. In the high school, ELA and World Language Departments, they met again to discuss the SEAL of Bilinguality Program and started the creation of the application and identification of potential student candidates. The high school has generated an instructional support team to generate additional support for students who struggle academically and behaviorally. And the crisis team has been meeting to discuss revisions to the plan after implementing the plan this past January. The team is learning from experience and adding to the working and living documents of the crisis and suicide prevention plans. In the high school, the drama club is putting on another show at the end of the month. We are hoping to have it be a sold-out show, so we would appreciate all of your support here at the board. And on the topic of elementary tubing field trips, our local ski area, Bear Town Ski Center, will be adding a full tubing hill, just like the one at Titus Mountain. Bear Town is a nonprofit that just changed recently this year. They were a not-for-profit, and they're now a nonprofit. And once they establish their new tubing hill, they would love to have our school, along with many others, bring their school trips to support local activities. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Jen, I realize that Cameron is a real hard act to follow, but I didn't realize I skipped right over you. Did you have anything you wanted to add to reports?
No.
All right. Completely understand. All right, thank you. Sorry about that. The next is committee reports. We only had one committee meeting this month. Audit Committee met on February twenty-sixth, and we did our usual discussion concerning cafeteria and its progress. We're really grateful for the dedication of our administration and our cafeteria staff and our students to keep this program going. But one of the things that was extra interesting about our audit committee meeting is our treasurer, Ms. Stahl, took it upon herself to create an analysis of energy costs in each building and the percentages of change from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, which was an excellent idea. And we actually decided to, we were so thrilled that we decided to build on it. So, we are going to actually have her go retro to two thousand seventeen, which will be a little bit more accurate concerning our measure of energy use, but we're also going to manage it through, information through kilowatts versus...
Two dollars.
Yeah, instead of dollars. So, we were, as the audit committee, we were really excited about that. I thought Mike would be excited to hear that. Some of the questions that we discussed were in aspects of our financial reports, were different departments and how their budgets are allocated to them. We talked about grant revenues and expenses, payments to individuals such as sports officials and employee travel reimbursements. We had a really nice meeting and discussion, we enjoyed it very much. And we will be meeting again on Wednesday, March twentieth, at seven forty-five AM. Thank you. All right. Next, it's resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Oh, thanks, Pauline.
I'll second it.
And Mike? Any question or discussion concerning the minutes? All right, excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. It's resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CSE and CPSE recommendations dated three-twelve-two thousand nineteen. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Doug? And second?
Yeah.
Mike? Question or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. It's resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following personnel resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations, appointments, firemen, and retirements be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Holden? Oh, sorry, Mark. Any question or discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Noes? Abstains? The next is eight, it's miscellaneous, it's on page six of thirteen. The resolution concerns our annual district meeting, whereas the Beadman Town Central School District...
I move to, I move the resolution.
Thank you. Do we need a second for that?
Second.
Okay, thank you. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was really excited by that. It's three pages long, just so you guys know. Is there any questions or discussion? Should we possibly recap?
Well, it's a standard, it's a, it's something that we do every year, we're mandated to put this forward, but it has, it has the budget vote date in here, and it has the busing in here, busing competition, the budget hearing date, number of board seats that are open. So it just gives the information to the community of how we're going to be going about our budget process. Is that good?
Works for me. Anybody else have any questions or discussion? All right, excellent. Roll call vote, please.
Douglas Feely.
Yes.
Kathy Buckley.
Yes.
Jeremy Connors.
Yes.
Michael Hagedorn.
Yes.
Holden Lehman.
Yes.
Ed Maron.
Yes.
Mark Zan.
Yes.
Pauline Stone.
Yes.
Resolution passes. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the amendment, who, the amended employment agreement dated March twelfth-two thousand nineteen between the Beadman Town Central School District and Daniel W. Mannix, be it further resolved that the President of the Board of Education be authorized to execute said amended employment agreement on behalf of the Board of Education. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Motion.
I'm sorry. Discussion or questions?
No motion.
Motion.
Oh, all of it. I am so sorry, guys. All right, motion is Jeremy. May I have a second, please?
Oh, second.
Thank you, Mike. Question or discussion? All right. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Douglas Feely.
Yes.
Kathy Buckley.
Yes.
Jeremy Connors.
Yes.
Michael Hagedorn.
Yes.
Holden Lehman.
Yes.
Ed Maron.
Yes.
Mark Zan.
Yes.
Pauline Stone.
Yes.
It's resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following policies, policy, sorry. May I please have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
A second.
Second.
Mike beat you to it, Pauline.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Noes? Abstains? Resolution passes. It's resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolution on the consent agenda, financial reports, donation, a letter of agreement for professional architectural engineering consulting and services be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Mark? Any question or discussion? All right. May I please have a roll call vote?
Douglas Feely.
Yes.
Kathy Buckley.
Yes.
Jeremy Connors.
Yes.
Michael Hagedorn.
Yes.
Holden Lehman.
Yes.
Ed Maron.
Yes.
Mark Zan.
Yes.
Pauline Stone.
Yes.
All right. We have additional items to discuss.
We can get the two middle ones out of there.
You want to do the two middle ones first? Yeah, let's do those first, and then the other two we'll actually talk about.
Okay, so, we're gonna handle the first, or the two middle ones, and then move to the, the other two, however you, however you see fit. Right now, we're scheduling a budget workshop for March twenty-sixth. If nothing chan, you know, we told you some of these numbers will change, and they do change, but we don't want control when they change. If nothing changes between now and March twenty-sixth, we may say to you, there's nothing to discuss. So every now and then, we do cancel those meetings. I'm anticipating having the meeting, but I wanted to let you know that that's not unusual for a budget workshop to get canceled, because just the changes haven't rolled in yet. And then the other one is Joanne, you want to take the dinner?
Oh, the Clinton County School Boards Recognition Dinner, this is twentieth annual, on May second, at the Rainbow Wedding and Banquet Hall. It's to honor the top ten percent of each graduating class within Clinton County. The deadline to RSVP is the beginning of April and soon.
It's a really good dinner. It's, they always have a really good speaker, and all the kids, and they are celebrated and awarded, and they have to say where students gonna go, what they're gonna do when they, when they graduate.
Just the seniors.
Just the seniors.
Top ten percent.
Top ten percent of the graduating class, yeah.
I will say that I have attended every year. I cannot attend this year. I will be in Bermuda.
What?
So, I am so sorry. If we could get some volunteers to attend, I'd be greatly appreciative.
I wasn't last year I was volunteering. It was really good.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it was nice.
All right, excellent.
If you email Joanne or let her know at any point before the April first?
Yeah, by April first.
April first, we'll get done.
All right. All right, well, thank you very much, guys. The next two items are our board vacancy and Dodge Library. Why don't we start with Dodge Library? Last April, there was still a little snow on the ground, April and May. Jeremy and I attended a Board of Directors meeting at Dodge Library. They had been requesting for years to be gifted the Dodge Library. They're very excited about the possibility, and like Mr. Mannix has stated, we have been a little distracted from that, and it really needs to be addressed again. They would like ownership of the library, and we would like to keep the library within the community. So it's a win-win for our community and the district, and actually a triple win. It's a, a win for the, the library, for the directors. So, if there's anything that Mr. Mannix needs to add?
The only thing is that I can see somebody saying, well, that's an asset, that building is part of the school district, but it was given to the district to be used as a library for that community. And it'd be a little disingenuous to sell that to some, you know, to sell it as a home or whatnot. So, the original purpose is a library. If the library association wants to continue running it, and take ownership of it, and, I think that's just the right thing to do.
And, and I will say, they do an outstanding job in that library. They really, they are a phenomenal representation of our community and our school.
They're actually getting better. In the past year, they've actually started doing a lot more community events, which they, I mean, they're a cute little library, they're a really nice library, but they've really stepped it up this year.
Yeah.
Are they on Fisk Road?
I'm sorry?
Are they on Fisk Road?
Yes. Yeah. All right.
So, so we'll, we'll just provide, we have our lawyer looking into it. Once we receive that information, we'll notify you, put in the portal, and that should get the ball rolling. So something that could be added to either an agenda or to the budget files.
All right. And the next is our board education, Board of Education vacancy. So, we've updated our policy, which sounds like we've gone to a new policy, but really we've brought it back to the old policy. So, now we have more opportunities on how we, as a board, decide who will fill this temporary seat. So we can follow the same process that we have, and that's okay. We can have a discussion at the board table, that's okay. So I would like to encourage us at this time to just decide how we want to proceed with the process. Any input?
Do you feel strongly about any particular course?
No, I, I felt, I have no, I do not feel uncomfortable with the interview process and bringing one person forward or discussing it. I've actually participated in both processes.
Well, last time we had eleven candidates, now we have four.
We have four.
So it seems a lot more doable.
Yes.
So I guess I would say that I'm in favor of following the policy that we had been doing, interview those four, give them an opportunity to speak and go ahead. Does that look timewise?
Timewise commitment, we usually keep it to one night. They, we try to set aside around twenty minutes per person, so we're looking at about an hour and twenty minutes, then maybe half an hour, forty-five minutes discussion afterwards. So probably about a two-hour, at the most, two and a half-hour discussion. We like to set aside twenty minutes per person. I cannot guarantee you that it will only be twenty minutes per person, but that's...
As far as like our timeline too, that, could we do it in the next couple of weeks and then...
Absolutely.
It could be on the next agenda.
Yeah, it could. We actually have ninety days. Part of our rush last time is we had published in the paper that we were going to appoint on a specific night. We learned our lesson with that. That put us in a rush, but now we have more flexibility, and so we could appoint the next meeting, the meeting after that. But we do have to appoint someone. Our ninety days exceeds the election, or does not exceed the election, so we have to appoint a person.
I think that's something else we should consider is, we don't really want someone who gets appointed like two days before the election.
Yeah.
And then doesn't have time to say, "Hey, this is kinda nice, I should run."
Right. Right. So, I mean, I mean, my goal would be at our next board meeting, we appoint someone. We'll just have to see, how do you guys feel about the process?
I think that's...
Yeah.
Okay. So keep the process the way it was? So we'll do the interviews, and we'll push, we'll put, push one person forward, we'll bring one person forward on the recommendation of a minimum of three board members. Okay. Is there anyone that would like to volunteer some time?
Do you have a date?
Our next meeting is scheduled for the 26th.
Correct. So we could either pick a date now and see who's available, or we could send out a couple of dates tomorrow and see, you know, if people can respond, and if we have one that has three. What is up to you guys?
I think that's the better way for me. I mean, I could say, "Yeah, I'd be glad to go," but most of us have busy calendars, so if we threw out a few dates, I could try to do this one, this one.
The more board members you get, the better.
Sure.
But we cannot exceed five. We cannot have five.
Correct.
Because five is core. So maximum of four.
Three or four, yeah.
Yeah. And technically, we could have two, because now it's, it's, we're allowed to follow the process that we can work with, instead of, that it has to be a minimum of three.
So we'll send out a few dates and see what response we have, and if we don't have enough, we'll send out a few more dates, we'll work with you and see, and see who's available. We'll do that tomorrow.
Our other options, just so we're all clear, is that if we chose not to do the interview, we've all read that we can make a decision now.
Right.
We could, I guess, communicate by group email and decide next meeting without it of conducting interviews, right? What are other processes?
Well, you do have a policy that was, is kind of one of those things that was problematic over the last few months.
Yeah.
Of not necessarily holding board discussions or board business via email.
True.
So I would, that last part about the email might be problematic. Well, you can get some baseline information, I know, but, but trying to make a board decision and get a board position via email is not advisable.
Okay. So we make a decision now, we do the formal process, we could have a meeting of just ourselves, just board members. That's probably our options, right? Should we say?
Yes, but that would have to be a special meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't see any other... Okay.
All right. All right, so we will send out some possible dates, and we'll coordinate, and we will take it from there. All right, excellent. All right. That's it. The next, we have public comment. We've set aside ten minutes for public comment. This is our second public comment of the evening, so we will have Mr. Mannix, oh, Mr. Mannix, Mr. Maron do a brief review of our policy of public comment, and then if you would like to approach the board with a public comment, you're welcome to do so.
All right. Same thing I said before, please behave, all of us, and restrict comments to not reference the people. All comments are welcome, they're constructive and productive, and we all know we have room to grow, so anything is welcome. Anything that's more specific and requires more information, we should reach out to the district clerk and go that route as well. So that's it.
All right. If you have a public comment to make, we please invite you to come up front to the board and...
My name is Cynthia Naylor, and you know why I'm here? I've asked you guys by email, by mail, proof that the one board member is a resident of Beadman Town School District, that we all know she's not. And I don't know what else I can do. I've done all that you've asked me to do, I've contacted the state, I've contacted you guys, and I've yet gotten one answer to any question that I've submitted. I still think it's illegal that she's living outside the district, but evidently, you guys don't follow the rules because you're letting her still be a board member.
All right. I am going to break our rule, which we're finally almost doing our policy and making it straight public comment, but the reason why I'm doing this is you didn't get to attend our last board meeting. In our last board meeting, it was brought to the public that in the lawsuit of Brockway versus Beadman Town Central School District, it was determined that Pauline Stone is a resident of the district.
Have you approved of that?
Yes.
How?
The court case has determined that she is a legal resident.
That's a law, right?
Uh, I'm sorry you feel that way, but the court case has determined, the lawsuit has determined, she is a legal resident of the district.
What's your address?
If there, if there are any questions or concerns regarding the court process, anyone is welcome to go to the court, ask for information about the case.
And... And go to county court?
Just like, just like with all the court cases associated with our districts, you know, obviously, names will be redacted, of course, and foiled or whatever, but all that information is and should always be public information.
So Brockway versus Beadman Town?
All right, we're done.
Yes.
Brockway versus Beadman Town?
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment at this time? All right. Moving forward, we need to have a clerk pro temp. Just to be more specific, when we're looking for clerk pro temp, it is just for going into and out of executive session, it is not the entire meeting. So do we have any volunteers? All right. Mr. Maron, we appoint Mr. Maron as our clerk pro temp. May I have a motion, please?
Motion. I'll second.
All right. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstains, resolution passes. All right. This resolution, a resolution passer, passes? Oh, hold on. It's resolved that the Board of Education enter into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Noes, abstains, resolution passes.